Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and fellow Aldermen. Today is May 6, 2020, and this is the final night of the 2020-2021 Board of Aldermen Budget Deliberations. This meeting is being conducted remotely, and as we begin, I wanted to take the opportunity to highlight a few guidelines to ensure business runs efficiently and that all statutory and administrative rules are followed. In accordance with the Freedom of Information Act and Governor Lamont's executive orders, this meeting is being recorded and will be made available on the City of Milford's website. If a member of the board would like to speak, please utilize the Raise Your Hand feature via Zoom. Please do not speak over other individuals, and when you are not speaking, please keep your phones and computers on mute. After being recognized to speak, please state your name and address prior to making a statement. With that, will everyone please stand up wherever you are and join us as we pledge allegiance and salute our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation, clear God, indivisible, liberty, justice.
Motion to come out of recess.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
On favor?
Aye.
We're out of recess. Madam Secretary, will you please take the roll?
Alderman Beatty?
Present.
Alderman Gaynor?
Here.
Alderman Genitazio?
Here.
Alderman Golden?
Here.
Alderman Grant?
Here.
Alderman Hardiman?
I'm trying.
Marby's here.
I'm seeing him. Alderman Harla?
Here.
Alderman Parente?
Here.
Alderman Frank Smith?
Here.
Alderman Winthrop Smith?
Here.
Alderman Sutton?
Here.
Alderman Tranquilly?
Here.
Alderman Vitro?
Here.
Alderman Vitalli?
Here.
Alderman Willis?
Here.
All are present.
We have 15 members present. We do have a quorum. Thank you, Madam Secretary. Tonight is the final step in the budget process. I'd like to thank the mayor, the department heads, the finance director and his staff, as well as the Board of Finance, Superintendent Hannah Cotea and her staff, and the Board of Education. I'd also like to thank the members of the Board of Aldermen who have put in many days and hours considering this budget. Each year, we need to do the hard work to understand all the needs and wants of each department, as well as the 55,000 citizens in Milford. The board needs to find a balance between our citizens, students, and senior citizens, and adapt the budget that is in the best interest for the entire city. Given the global coronavirus, I'm sorry, pandemic, this year is particularly challenging for Milford residents, many of whom find themselves laid off, furloughed, or facing economic uncertainty as the entire world adjusts to a new normal. In spite of these challenges, our board must adapt a prudent and responsible budget which yields the best results for the city. At this point, we will start our deliberations with a motion from the Majority Leader, Alderman Sutton. Alderman Sutton, do you have a motion?
I do. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion to approve the revenues and expenses for the 2020-2021 City of Milford budget as recommended by the Board of Finance with the following technical changes. On page eight, general fund revenue, account 483901, appropriated fund balance, reduced from $9,300,000 to $9,000,000 for a new department subtotal of $9,000,000. On page 84, employee benefits, account 529919, self-insurance contribution, reduced from $11,343,000 to $9,818,617 for a new department subtotal of $25,237,332 and a new department total of $25,260,532. On page 94, education health insurance contribution, account 524221, contribution self-insurance fund, reduced from $21,742,678 to $17,873,114 for a new department subtotal of $17,873,114 and a new department total of $17,873,114.
Motion's been made, and we have a second.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Alderman Genitazio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the board. Just for clarification purposes, I just wanted to ask Peter Adisi if he agrees with all these figures and if this was in correspondence to the email that was sent out prior to this vote. I want to be sure that the numbers are accurate.
Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Genitazio. Yes, I do agree with these numbers. They are consistent with the technical changes per my email from May 5.
And just to follow up, Mr. Chairman, through you to Mayor Blake. Mayor Blake, good evening. Question on the healthcare line item, did this number come in better than expected?
Mr. Chairman, yes, it did. As brief background, the City of Milford went through the process, an RF, request for qualifications for a new healthcare consultant. The former consultant, Milliman, was getting out of that type of business. They were refocusing on other types of finance, but they were no longer really engaged in the healthcare consulting field. So we had put out the request even before. Really, it was driven for bringing on a new healthcare consultant for our negotiations for some of the collective bargaining agreements that need to be renewed as of June 30. But because the assessment for our contribution was so stale, we did ask them to do a new assessment with at least several more months of experience, and they came in, their actuaries that the healthcare consultant employees came in with a much reduced number from the initial estimate that Milliman, our previous healthcare consultants, gave us. So it was good news. It was based on a lot more current information, a broader swath of experience for the fiscal year. So it was a pleasant surprise. I mentioned at the last couple of budget meetings that this was good news.
Thank you for the update.
More information about that as well.
Okay, thank you for the update, Mayor Blake, and no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Alderman Genitazio. Alderman Frank Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. Mr. Mayor, just a quick question on this. When these healthcare savings were realized, was there any consideration given to restoring your original budget with each of the various department accounts?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, to you to Alderman Smith. Again, this budget process really is, over the course of eight to 10 months, we really start it in October with each of the departments, and then we go individually in December, and then Peter and I sit down in January and go through all the different components of this budget before releasing our mayor's adopted budget. And with my initial press statement, I did mention back in January of 2020 that both the Board of Finance and the Board of Aldermen had their work cut out for them. They had a lot of work to do during this budget deliberation to bring this as close to a flat budget as we can because it was a significant increase. We worked with our various department heads to get it down between the budget numbers that we put forth in October, November, December, and then the need to kind of bring it down. In February, the Board of Finance made the request, and the departments responded. They did shave off some, but then, as we got into March and April, we did get these new numbers from the healthcare consultants. However, March and April, at the same time, this pandemic really hit the city, hit the nation and the world, and it made it even more critical, as Chairman Vito said, to keep a reasonable budget, given the times, given the financial straits for each of our 55,000 residents in Milford, all those households, many of whom have people in the houses that have either lost their job, have been furloughed, are now on unemployment, scraping to get by. This virus is not going away anytime soon. There is going to be a huge economic component that reverberates through for certainly the next fiscal year. We are trying to keep everything as tight as possible in the city. I know that in most of your homes, economics is one of the things that everybody is thinking about right now because this virus is having such an impact. But to your point, we have been working with each of our departments to try to offer the same great services, again, under this new normal, but we are trying to offer the same services, but while sharpening our pencils. At this point, my recommendation is to, to a great degree, adopt most of the recommendations of the Board of Finance, other than those you think are critical to the mission.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Vitalli?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Charity, too. I believe, Peter, if I could refer you to in our budget book, the Board of Finance recommended budget on page three, the estimated mill rate without the cuts that we are talking about tonight was going to be 28.46. Can you calculate for us what with these new cuts that we just heard about the other night, could you tell us what that mill rate would be?
Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Vitalli. Yes, I can give you a mill rate estimate. It's based on these technical changes, as well as a small update to the grand list of 10-119, based on the Board of Assessment Appeals adjustments that were recently made. So with that change, the mill rate would be 27.68.
I'm sorry, 66 or 68?
68, 27.68.
And this year's mill rate is what?
27.71. So this would be a reduction of .03 mills? Or a reduction of .11%?
Thank you.
Alderman Win Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and through you, that answered my question. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Alderman Genitazio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to point a clarification, through you to the Finance Director. So, Peter, you mentioned that this is actually .03, it's going to be a decrease in the mill rate with these numbers that have just been presented with these changes?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, Alderman Genitazio. Yes, it would be a slight decrease to the mill rate of a decrease of .03.
And just to follow up through you, Mr. Chairman, how would that affect the property taxes in this next budget cycle?
In this next budget cycle, using an average home with a market value of about $311,070, it would be a reduction of about $7 in real estate taxes.
A reduction?
Yes, a reduction.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No further questions.
Alderman Sutton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to speak briefly in favor of the motion. I want to commend the department heads, the mayor, the Board of Aldermen, everyone who took part in creating this budget, the Board of Finance as well. And to have an opportunity like this arise where we have the opportunity to further reduce the mill rate based upon this, you know, I can't imagine, you know, a better scenario. I think it's a testament to this board's fiscal responsibility to the administration, to the departments, and I urge my fellow Aldermen to support this budget, to support the motion.
Alderman Vitalli?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you to the mayor. So, Mr. Mayor, if we didn't hire a new individual to get involved with our health expenditures, we would not have known this question.
Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Vitalli, we would have likely asked for an update from our healthcare consultant immediately before we did the budget. We do that almost every year. However, the type of personnel that our former healthcare consultant had was not as sophisticated anymore. A lot of the people that we worked with at our former healthcare consultant had left because they were no longer doing that, so they did not have the best and the brightest. That's what pushed us to hiring a new consultant. So it was a situation where the estimate that they gave us, you know, well in advance of this budget, was just not current. It was way too conservative because they didn't have the right people doing the analysis, really.
Okay, thank you. Just to furthermore, you know, I think it's great that we reduced it by .03, but obviously, I think there's a lot more that we can do, and I'd like to see it get down much further than that, because I think we can look at some other accounts that we could be saving. And so at this point, you know, I'm glad to hear it. It's a good surprise. It's good news, but I think we can do better. Thank you.
Alderman Genitazio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I would also like to express my thanks and gratitude to all the work that went into this budget, and I'm pleased with the result. However, I do agree with Alderman Vitalli. I'm looking through this budget. I feel like there's more flexibility for the taxpayer, there's more opportunity, but I am, you know, happy with the result. But I would like to, during the course of the meeting, bring other things to light where I think we could have experienced or realized more savings, more savings for the taxpayer, especially in these tough times. I'm sure people will be happy to see that the mill rate has been reduced and taxes are flat. However, you know, every penny counts, and, you know, there are things in here that I would like to bring to light and discuss further, but for purposes of time, and I know we have a motion on the floor in a second, I just wanted to express my thoughts prior to a vote. Thank you.
Alderman Win Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and through you. I also would like to echo the sentiments of Alderman Vitalli and Alderman Genitazio. This is probably a better discussion to be had later on in a general discussion area, but I don't know whether we're going to have that opportunity, so I just wanted to indicate the fact that this is a pleasant surprise. This is a fair amount of savings, which is great news, which the board, we weren't aware of, which is fantastic. But I do believe that there are other departments in other areas in which we can save significantly more. And if we're not doing that, that's, in my view, that's problematic. We can have a greater benefit to the city if we do save in those particular areas, and so I'd like to see that happen. So if I do get the opportunity, I will expand on some of the issues and some of the areas which I think we could save more, but I will save that hopefully for later. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Alderman Beatty?
I would just like to add to that, that the budget, the proposed budget wasn't a dry document where one looks through it and looks to see where one can cut or one can do services. The premise was to maintain the level of services and excellent services, and so any cut is looked at in light of that. So the last three comments were just about, let's go through it again and look for places to reduce. It's very hard work, as all of you have done, to look at the budget in light of what is best for the community.
Alderman Beatty, are you finished? Alderman Beatty, are you finished? I think you're on mute.
I've hit it twice.
Thank you. Is there any more discussion? Alderman Genitazio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Beatty. Just for conversation, I just would like you to know that what we looked at and what we're expressing to you, we're not looking to reduce any city services. These reductions that we will bring to light are flexible, they're not going to affect the taxpayer, they're not going to affect any public safety issues, any health issues, they're not going to affect city services at all. So though, I appreciate your comments and your work as well in this, and I appreciate the mayor's behind-the-scenes work with the actuaries, you know, we still can find areas that can be reduced significantly without affecting the well-being of the taxpayer. Thank you.
Alderman Vitalli?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a comment, yeah, I didn't think that was a very fair assessment, Alderman Beatty, because of the fact that we do look through the budget as we all do, our due diligence. Five, I think what we've cut or what was reintroduced was almost a $5.8 million decrease in health. That just seems so illogical to have that big number, have it cut. Can you, Mayor, can you elaborate on that? Why does, it's a great, it's a great number, you know, to get all that money cut, but could you tell us how that was brought to sight and brought to our attention that it's such a large number?
Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Vitalli. I'll give you the broad strokes, and then I will certainly let our Finance Director, Peter Eric DC, fill in some of the gaps. One, they looked at a longer period of claims from the last year. So the experience that was done in the most recent analysis was more current, and they had a different universe from which to look at. They also did another thing. They also provided the city with an option to increase our stopgap coverage, the excess coverage that we have. That saved us about $2,000, I'm sorry, about $2 million, approximately $2 million. out of that, the total savings, because our excess coverage had risen significantly. But I'll let our Finance Director give you some more of the details and the specifics as to the finances behind it.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Alderman Vitale. Yes, one, the mayor raised some of the key factors. But just to elaborate a bit more, the former healthcare consultant, Milliman, I had asked them, as usual, each year for their initial projection and then ask them for a second projection. And then it's usually customary as we go through Board of Finance, Board of Alderman, to try to at least get a third projection closer to the budget vote, just to see if we can fine tune the numbers as, in a positive manner. So what USI did compared to Milliman is that they, as the mayor said, used a more updated 12 months of claims experience. Milliman had gone up to, I believe, October, November of 2019, whereas USI was able to go up to February. But equally important was the change to the stop loss. We, I had a USI take a very careful, harder look into the stop loss, and we've been doing that year over year. And the trends were changing in terms of the experience, in terms of looking at what the premium was, which Anthem was charging, and the level of retention, which has been at 100,000 for many, many years. We looked at the last three to four years and realized where the group our size and based on the most recent four years' experience, it made a lot of sense to increase the retention from 100,000 to 200,000. And what that did was significantly reduce the premium for the stop loss coverage from somewhere in the realm of $8 million down to 4.8 million. So that was a significant portion of the savings. And then using that claims experience and also adjusting the trend. I think Milliman was ultra-conservative in terms of the trend they used. I think part of that was that they just had actuaries working on it and that the main consultant had left Milliman. And so having the new consultant working with the USI actuaries, I think, was great. And they were able to fine tune the claims experience, the medical trend, and make it more as close to realistic as possible, knowing that we had budgetary pressures. And so to clarify, the total reduction was about 5.4 million, not 5.8. But I agree with the ultimate. It is a significant reduction. And it is good news for the city budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Just a little follow up. You know, it's a great discovery, believe me. But as a last minute calculation, it's a really big number. So when you talked about it having a very, the former healthcare consultant having a very conservative approach, do you think this might be too liberal approach? And that we will be paying, we're not paying now, we're paying later?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, that is a good question. It's something that did cross my mind. And so I carefully sat down with the numbers myself and spent a lot of time looking at the numbers. And then going back to USI, we had spent a number of hours reviewing everything. And then after my review, I went back to them further just to double check every single number that went through and the methodology that they used. And we both felt comfortable. And again, looking at the trends, we are hopeful that it will hold. But as with any projection, it is not an exact 100% number, but we are comfortable with it based on the data we've seen, especially over the last four years. Thank you.
So you feel comfortable with that number and you don't feel as though we should be a little more conservative and not cut that much? So you're kind of okay with the idea that we're not going to have to deal with this later on in the year? But again, you're saying that we may have to. So would it be better to be a little more conservative at this point? Just your opinion. Again, I hear what you're saying. But, you know, I just don't like to have that back and hit us in the back in a few more months.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, Alderman Vitale. I understand what you're saying. And that is on my, very much on my mind as well. But by the same token, we have to be mindful of the fiscal challenges that we face, the economic climate that we face. And it is very difficult. You look at other cities and towns in the state. A lot of them are trying to keep the taxes flat or in some cases, if they can, decrease. It is a goal I think we all try to set for ourselves here, for the taxpayers. And so what I am concerned is I respect the discussion about wanting to look at the budget further and see if you can identify other savings. But I would caution against that because this mill rate of 27.68, I think, you know, I would be concerned about reducing it further or too much because, again, we have to be able to raise sufficient revenue in order to anticipate contingencies, including with health insurance. But going back to the original question, we are comfortable with these numbers. And based on the health of the health insurance fund itself, we think that we will be okay. Thank you.
I thank you, and I really hope so because I think it would be easier today to increase or increase that number in the health, in the health piece, rather than, you know, what you alluded to, the idea of we all want to cut, we want to cut the mill rate, cut it even further. And we have to be cognizant of the fact that people are out of work, losing business, furloughed, and anything we can do for them is, would be a plus. But at this point, I kind of think that is, it is an anomaly. We're not going to get that kind of savings again. But the fact remains that I kind of think it's a big bite. Thank you for your information and input.
Alderman Genetasio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I would just like to also share with the board that I am concerned about this. I think Alderman Vitale raises a very valid concern. And listening to Peter, Peter, it sounds like there's some risk involved. And you know that the members of this board, including myself, hold you in high regard. You know, you're really an asset to the city. You've won, you know, consecutive awards for being responsible. And I understand there's budget pressures. So getting back to Alderman Vitale's sentiments, you know, I hope that we're not at risk. If you feel comfortable with this, you know, we're following your lead. You know, I just feel like it's funny that we're talking about healthcare because that was a big campaign issue in the last election. Former Alderman Gorman always said that the city was spending too much money on healthcare. And, you know, now you get some pressure from the budget and the possibility of taxes going up. And now we're starting to look into things differently to keep things flat, which I understand. And, you know, it's either one or two things. We were overpaying by way too much or we're getting the deal of the lifetime. So, you know, with that being said, you know, I'm going to follow your lead on this. But it is, you know, it does raise an eyebrow, you know, because it is a significant savings. And it is the 11th hour. And here we are, ready to, you know, vote on a final budget. And we realize this savings. So, you know, I hope it's not politically motivated. I hope that it's a sincere thing, and I hope it continues. But if there's a bump in the road, to Alderman Vitale's point, this could be very problematic moving forward. Thank you.
Alderman Winsmith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and through you. It's just a little odd to me. I just heard that we shouldn't reduce the mill rate anymore. It's just an odd statement in my eyes. So my question would be, how low would the mill rate have to be for us not to be able to generate the type of revenue that the city would need? I guess that's through you, Mr. Chairman, to whoever can answer that question.
Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Smith, I'll take a stab at this. I'm not quite crystal clear as to what the question is. But each department is very lean. Our city runs in a very lean fashion. I don't want to say we're to the bone lean, but we're pretty close. We are trying to streamline and make more efficient all of the different departments, everything that we do. There is not a lot to cut, as our Finance Director mentioned. The budget that is before you is about as streamlined as it can be. I think that that is what every municipality is going for, to try to get the best services in the most efficient manner. And I think what is before you is just about that. Our Finance Director, I don't want to say warned, but did give an advisory that if we do cut too, too much more, or really anything more, critical services may be affected. Critical services right now are lean, they're efficient, they're effective. But by reducing too much more, we're going to put in jeopardy those critical services.
And thank you for that. And through you, Mr. Chairman. So the recommendation is if the mill rate right now is at 27.68, to reduce it, to have an additional cut, to reduce it to, say, 27.67 or 66, that is not recommended whatsoever? Because we can't possibly find any more savings in the budget because it's too lean?
Mr. Chairman, through you. Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Smith. It's not a question of recommendation or not. It's a question of, for every budgetary item, there are consequences. You know, if you do cut $100,000 from one department or if you do reduce a particular line item, where it will certainly have an effect on the operation of the city, the services that the residents of Milford come to expect. And quite frankly, they deserve.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, and nobody, including myself, is saying that we should make certain cuts to reduce services that the citizens of Milford receive or would in any way affect any sort of contractual obligations of our city employees. That's not what I'm saying. That's not what any other Alderman is saying. All we are saying is that there are other areas to cut from the budget that could reduce the mill rate. And I just find it odd that the recommendation is to not make any more cuts to reduce the mill rate when those cuts could be a savings for the citizens of Milford. Thank you.
Alderman Tranquilly. Alderman Tranquilly, I think you're on mute.
Sorry, sorry. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to, whether it be Peter or the mayor. Would a reduction in the Board of Education budget affect those services in the city that we're talking about with the mill rate?
Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Tranquilly. The adjustments to the Board of Education line item would obviously affect the operations for our Milford Public Schools, especially at this point when we are going through unprecedented times. A lot of the things that have been proposed for the Board of Education budget for 2020, 2021 are likely going to be thrown out the window come next fall because there are going to be a whole bunch of new critical priorities that are associated with the Board of Education's mission. There is going to be a lot of catching up to do, given the fact that for a three-month period of time, students have learned remotely. It is not the same as classroom learning. I can tell you as a parent that distance learning from home, no matter how good it is, is not as good as the education that students are getting in their classroom. And because of that, we have an entire district that we're going to have to reprioritize our school learning next year through additional resources in order to ensure that our students continue to thrive. I can tell you that a lot of the priorities that the school system had for this year, as they were proposed back in January, are no longer the same. I know that they're working each and every day at the administrative level. I know that the actual board at the legislative level is having lots and lots of meetings and discussions to find out how best to adjust and pivot to play catch up so that our students kind of make up the three months that they, I don't want to say lost, but there is, you know, for some kids, they lost a lot. For other kids, they've lost some. But there's no kid that is in as good a position as they would have been if they learned in the classroom.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I'm not saying take away valuable resources for the Board of Ed. So through you, Mr. Chairman, to, I believe, Peter Eric D.C., what part of the Board of Education budget in this year, this budget, is contractual? The dollar amount, if you can, please.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Alderman Tranquilly. Based on my understanding is that the bulk of the part of the budget is contractuals related to salaries for the education staff. So if you looked at the Board of Ed's proposed budget at the salary level, that would be the contractual part for the most part. And I think based on the budget book that they presented, total salaries was about, close to 69.5 million and total benefits, 6.5 million.
I'm sorry, Peter, if I can. So out of the two, I'm trying to find it on the page, or 2.5 plus million, I think, right now of the increase, what part of that is contractual? I know it's roughly 80%, but do we have an actual dollar amount? Because I can't find it. I don't know if you can help me out with that.
Mr. Chairman, through you, the Board of Ed. If you look at the Board of Ed's budget, including the other education costs, as the Alderman said, it's about 60% of the total city budget. And again, my understanding is that the contractual part, again, are the salaries and to some extent, the benefits. And I believe you're looking for a percentage, if you could clarify your question.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to Peter. I'm actually looking for a number. Is it 400,000? Is it 600,000 is really what I'm looking for? If you were to make a reduction, another reduction in the Board of Ed account. I'm looking for something that would not affect contractual agreements or basically increases in their salaries.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I would hesitate to respond to that with all certainty. I wish that the Chair of the Board of Ed was here, Jim Richard Telly, was here because, again, we budget a lump sum appropriation for them and they do the analysis in terms of that, of the allocation. I have it at a high level based on the allocation. I have it at a high level based on the information that they've presented to all of us in their budget summary. But it's hard for me to give a percentage for that type of reduction.
So then hopefully, it's safe to say that next year, since there's such a huge increase this year, that there should not be much of an increase for next year. And I know that we won't know till next year, but I think one of the aldermen had mentioned, this is a pretty big increase. I think it's the biggest in almost 10 years. So hopefully, we won't be doing the same thing next year. But I appreciate your answers. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the time.
Mr. Chairman, it's Ben Blake.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Chairman, I would direct Alderman Tranquilly to the budget book for the Board of Education. On the executive summary, Roman numeral pages six and seven, it does, it does show a pie graph where everything is broken down. And so I think that gives a little bit better indication as to, you know, what is fixed cost and what is not. So you may want to refer to that as well.
Mr. Chairman, through you to the mayor. Thank you, Mayor Blake. I do see that, but I see percentages, and I'm just looking for actual numbers as in 10,000, 100,000. But I appreciate it. I see it. Thank you.
Alderman Grant, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. It seems like we've had a lot of different discussions at this point on many different topics. And I understand that, you know, because of the Zoom format, we are, you know, kind of adjusting the way that this meeting is being held. Would just be able to please clarify, right now, the current motion on the floor is just to implement the reductions that were found from the consultant. And there will still be an opportunity for alders to make additional motions on any reductions that they wish to do. Is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, it's Ben Blake again.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Chairman, the motion can be read again, but the motion that was brought by the Majority Leader, Tony Sutton, did make, it was a motion to approve the revenue and the expenditures for the budget as recommended by the Board of Finance. So again, any alderman can make amendments to that. They can discuss that. But that's the motion on the floor.
Thank you.
Alderman Win Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And through you, I heard someone mention cuts to the Board of Education budget. And though I did not bring this up, I think I'd be remiss if I didn't address it. It was said that any cut to the Board of Ed budget would be a cut to the needed services that our students would receive. I don't think that's entirely accurate. Just a quick glance at the budget book would show that there is $400,000, almost $400,000 allotted for flex furniture, which I don't think would affect any needed or required services that our students certainly do need. So with just that, I don't think it's an accurate statement that any sort of cut would affect any needed service.
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I thought I understood the motion, but again, it's not just voting for those cuts, it's voting for the entire, the entirety of the budget. Again, please, can you really clarify what we're voting on, Mr. Mayor? I totally am confused at this point.
Mr. Chairman, Ben Blake, again, through you to Alderman Vitale. It's from my hearing of the motion, and we could ask Alderman Sutton to reread it. That may be the best way to clarify it. Alderman Sutton, are you so inclined to bring your motion again, or at least explain the motion that you have brought?
Certainly, I will. I will read the motion again. I think it's self-explanatory. The motion is to approve the revenues and expenses for the 2021 City of Milford budget as recommended by the Board of Finance, with the three technical changes that I discussed in the motion.
Thank you, Alderman Sutton.
Mr. Chair, so that sounds like all the revenues and expenses, as the budget is presented, with the change, with the increase or the decrease in the health area, right?
Correct.
And Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Vitale, it's Ben Blake. Again, any alderman can move to amend any line item in the budget. You could make adjustments to the Board of Ed side, or the city side, or any of our enterprise funds as you see fit.
So if you vote no on the budget, and then it'll be further discussion, obviously. Or if you take, no, I'm, again, I'm so sorry for having this discussion, but the fact remains, I'm still, you know, when we talk about, we will accept this budget with the revenues and expenses. That means this is the budget we're looking at, and we're going to accept it, and with the reduction in the healthcare. So if we, so this is the time you have total discussion of all of the budget items before that vote is, because that's the final vote, right?
Mr. Chairman.
It will be a final vote.
Mr. Chairman, through you, after, you know, the vote on the revenues expenditures is taken, assuming that it is adopted, if it is adopted, we'll say, the finance director will still have to calculate the taxes due, and then there will be another vote on the taxes due and the resolution that it's adopted each year as an ordinance.
Okay, I am clear on that, because that's it. So this is going to be the final vote. So whatever we have to say, we either say it now or forever hold our peace. Okay, thank you.
Alderman Frank Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess I just, since all this, back and forth on this, I want to make sure, and I don't know if I'm breaking up here. I see I have an unstable connection. We are, we are basically, instead of what we would normally do in a live, in-person meeting at City Hall, instead of going through the whole litany of accounts and line items, we simply have a motion for the entire city budget is on the table, and we, as aldermen, are free now. With the adjustments that Alderman Sutton had mentioned with regard to the employee insurance, we are being asked to consider a single motion regarding the vote on the entire city budget, including the school budget. And we are free to, instead of going through each line item, make a motion to discuss, or not a motion, but discuss any particular item of interest to us in no particular order. I think that, is that what was intended, Alderman Sutton, just to be sure I understand?
The motion that was made was to approve essentially the City of Milford budget as a whole, recommended by the Board of Finance with those three enumerated technical changes.
And Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Smith, you know, this is a approach, or the style motion that we've utilized a couple of years ago. It's also the process that the Board of Finance has adopted, including this year. So this is something that we've done in the past, as recently as just a few years ago for this board. The same exact motion.
Thank you.
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm not the only one that was confused to some degree. So I agree that the fact is, we either know, talk, or whatever. I, and I'm dismayed with the idea that we shouldn't look for maybe more cuts that may not even reduce the mill rate, but can be talked about, because it's, it's a kind of perception is reality, and we need to lead by example here within the city. I know that the position of the Chief of Staff, we talked about it before, was negotiated. And when negotiations come through, and you have two parties negotiating, negotiate, whether it has to be mediated, or it has to go to final decision, the fact remains that, you know, in most negotiated contracts that I've ever been, for a long time, been associated with, we never, we never came out beyond a 2% to 3% to 4%. What I've seen is that in this Chief of Staff position, we, we made an adjustment. We increased it by $20,000. We now have a contract that's worth between 15% and 18% over three years with an increase. And I think we need, this office of the mayor needs to lead by example. And we talked about parity. And, you know, you stressed, Mr. Mayor, you stressed the idea of parity, and you had, you had a couple of the aldermen speak on parity and agree with you, but really never even said anything about any of the preceding departments as far as questioning them. We did have the fire department come up and say they needed parity. So when we fought so hard for parity in the mayor's office, with an additional, whatever, five, $8,000, it almost seems that, you know, you're talking to the citizenry of Milford, and the fact remains that some of these people are not working, they're out of work, they're furloughed, they're losing their job, they're losing businesses. And it's very tough to say that within the last few years, we've increased the salary in a position that's almost $25,000. So I'm very disappointed in that, that we can't lead by example, to the point where, that we have the example set, so that we can sort of be online and be connecting the dots with our, with the community who are losing, who are in really bad shape. So that's what I have to say on the municipal side. On the Board of Education side, I don't know if we, if it should have been revisited and maybe brought back to us, but I think there has been a big savings in the budget this year. The kids have only been in school for the seven months or so, and, you know, whether it be utilities that we've saved in, whether it's been other places that we've saved some money. I know, and I know through experience, that when there's very, when there's money left over in the budget, it really rarely, rarely gets put back to the city side. And what happens is that, you know, by July 1, you encumber all your money. You buy all the supplies that maybe you needed for the next year, you buy it this year. So I think next year's budget, Board of Education budget, is going to have a bigger buying power, because they're going to have that amount of money that not only they will be using, which is fairly saying that we're going to have to in some way. You don't know how we're going to open the board or the commissioner still, you know, still things are up in arms, and as far as not, not knowing how, and having a process in front of us, whether it's going to cost us more money with supportive services, whether it's going to cost us more money in other areas. But I think there will be somewhat of savings, and I think the Board of Education budget will have more power next year, because a lot of the supplies and fixtures and furniture and fixtures, whether it be, whether it be flex furniture, can all be bought somehow through this year's budget of the unspent budgets, because of what we didn't spend, because of what we saved. So for these reasons, I can't, I can't honestly vote for this budget as it's presented. So I would just only hope that there could be some, some type of procedure or process that we would know how much would be saved this year in the budget, and where we are going with next year's budget. And we haven't gotten that information, where I also asked for, you know, let's have a roadmap. Let's see where we're going and how we're doing these things, slowly but surely, but doing it in a, in using our due process and using the idea of common sense down the road. So thank you for letting me talk to you on those issues, but I don't know who agrees with me or not, but I may stand alone in that. But if I do, that's where I am. Thank you very much.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor in a second. All in favor? Alderman Janatasio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to take an opportunity to express my concerns in regards to the overall budget before this vote, knowing that it's the vote on the budget as presented. First, I do have a question, through you to Mayor Blake. Mayor Blake, so you, you mentioned the fact that this budget, there's no more room for reductions. So my question is, how do, how do you plan on, or what's your course of action? Because we've had testimony from department heads that they, point blank, told us that they're going to have to come back for more money. And, you know, the police department, for an example, for, you know, overtime and these. So how do you plan on handling that? Because, you know, that's, that's in the near future.
Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Janatasio. You know, the departments always come back to the Board of Aldermen to do transfers, budget memo transfers throughout the course of the year. I don't know if the police department has ever come back to do a allocation transfer for anything that had a substantial impact on wages. But in terms of transfers, it happens all the time, because there are always changes and adjustments. I expect that to be the case for 2020, 2021. But that's the normal course of budget, and that's how the operations of the city works. In terms of nothing else to cut, that statement was, I don't think, made in that format. I think what I said was that we have a very, very lean budget, a very lean city operations. And we are, we don't have a lot more to reduce, because the efficiency of the city right now is about as good as it gets. And by reducing it more, at least a significant reduction, would jeopardize some of the services that we have. But in no way, shape, or form, did I say that there was no adjustments that could be made, but very few, because we have gone through with a fine pick comb and looked at just about every piece of scrap and any type of fat on the bone, and we have whittled it away. Both the Board of Finance did that, the department heads did that. So we are presenting you with the most efficient budget that is possible, in my opinion.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, just to follow up. And the other thing, Mayor Blake, we did have a discussion about the possibility of cutting the lighting account by a minimal amount. But, you know, you said that, you know, in order for that to happen, that we would have to take that money and put it into, you know, the same department, but a different line item. So, you know, that doesn't really present a reduction for the taxpayer. So, you know, I was a little disappointed with that. That was something that Alderman Tranquilly brought to light, and we know that we've been saving money on lighting. I asked for the projected savings moving forward, to see, you know, if this cut or this reduction would be justified. And, you know, in my opinion, I believe that, you know, it could be. But through your direction, you know, you decided not to entertain that reduction. And the other thing I wanted to mention on the city side, I was opposed to the whole new job description of the Chief of Staff. And that came from, from our mayor. You know, this position historically was at a $70,000 salary with car, you know, and it's, it's been inflated. It's almost, you know, after this step, there's going to be another step. I mean, this, this job is going to be paying well over six figures, probably 105,000. And, you know, that's a lot of money. And I'm sure that this position is making your life a lot easier, Mayor Blake, you know, but the fact that a matter remains, you know, we have other departments, we have other directors. And, you know, since you set that precedent, you know, people have been asking for assistance. We had the assistant to the Health Director that was created in the last budget cycle that I was opposed to. And through our Health Director- And through our health director's testimony, she even alluded to the fact that she may need an assistant, you know, in her department. So, you know, that remains to be seen, but I pay attention when these departments come before us and they speak and she definitely said that. She made a statement and she said that she'd probably be looking to create that position. So, you know, again, is that going to benefit the taxpayers? I don't know. Is it going to make it easier for some of these departments to run, you know? Most likely, but, you know, there is room, there's always room, you know, to, to, to save money. And the other thing that, that really I was opposed to was this project manager position that you supported and that you created in the Public Works Department. And as far as I know, the only project is this North Street Convention Center, which honestly has never been presented to the Board of Aldermen. You might've mentioned it to the papers, you might've mentioned it, you know, out on the campaign trail, but you've never given us any renderings. I've never seen renderings on this project. I don't know how much money's being spent. I've never seen a budget on this project. I actually drove through there the other day. You know, I see, you know, that there's foundations in there, but it looks like the work is stopped. I don't know what, what it's going to cost the taxpayer. I don't know how it's being funded, you know? So when you say, or when you allude to the fact that this is a tight budget, you know, it raises questions. It raises a lot of questions because, you know, there's a lot of things, you know, that we don't know about and, you know, we should know about rightfully so because we are the, you know, we're in control of, of the money and how it's spent in the city. And, you know, we look to you as our mayor, you know, to be transparent and to, you know, let us know what the vision is and what things are going to cost. And, you know, these are reasons why, you know, that I can't support this budget because there's a lot of unknowns. And, you know, I can go through here and I can talk about the open space manager that was being funded through monies that was collected through the open space fund. You decided that you wanted to make it a permanent position. You said that it had to be a full-time position. That's, you know, the work that was entailed involved in that position. The person got benefits, you know? And the funny thing is, I don't even know if it's a full-time position because the guy that's doing it is doing it part-time now because he just got hired, you know, he moved into the assistant of Public Works Department and he's the assistant to the Public Works Director. So, you know, again, why is that being paid by, with taxpayer money? It, it, it just doesn't, you know, make sense. I mean, you know, so there's things in here that could be changed and, you know, to Alderman Smith's point, yeah, we could save more, we could lower the mill rate, you know, there's no risk in doing things like that. I mean, you know, these are the things that I see that I want to bring to your attention, you know, in all fairness, you know, we look at everything and these are the things that I wanted to share. And for those reasons, I cannot support this budget as presented. I still feel that there's more room, taxes could be lowered, the mill rate could be lowered more than it is presented before us tonight. Thank you.
Alderman Frank Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since we're airing the, our various thoughts and differences with the budget as presented, I'd like to revisit something that I brought up during the department hearings last week with regard to the school budget. I would like to also preface this by simply saying or reminding my fellow aldermen that by our charter, we are not allowed to vote on various line items or specific items within the school budget, but rather vote up or down on the budget. So it's a kind of all or nothing. And I, I use that to preface my remarks because what I'd simply like to do is to just submit my thoughts regarding the issue of the media aides, which I had brought up during the department hearings, expressed my feelings about that as I did before, and then perhaps invite my colleagues. I know this is not a, a public hearing where we're going to be hearing from other departments or hearing from the public, but in terms of our own deliberations, it was a decision of the superintendent and the Board of Education to eliminate the 15 media aides, which are item 1124 in the school budget, which is a savings of about $458,000, roughly $30,500 per position. There are 15 media aides, eight of them in the elementary school, one at each of the three middle schools and four at the two high schools. I did a little bit of in, very informal research on this over the past few days with several acquaintances and friends who are Milford School, Milford Board of Education, faculty, employees and a couple of parents, and they were fairly unanimous in their assessment that the media aides provide a very unique, very immediate and a very intimate support for students, particularly at the lower grades in terms of dealing with the different technologies, communications, different things with the Chromebooks and other new innovations of education that we didn't have when I was a student in Milford Public Schools. This is a very important function. I, and please understand too, that I am not questioning or in any way second guessing Dr. Katia's position as our educational leader. I'm sure there's good reasons for this. The $458,000 we save is probably going to be offset a good part by the eight technical specialists that will be replacing them in that function. But I would like to submit it to my colleagues for any discussion they care to add to this, their thoughts. I do plan to vote for the budget. I'm certainly not going to raise an objection on the entire school budget based on this one item, but as Dr. Katia said, educational recovery is going to be another important component of what our schools and what our city's going to look like when we finally emerge from this crisis. Educational recovery would also, I would expect, require more grassroots type of work among our faculty and among our educational leaders and working. In my opinion, it might be an ill advised move to make this kind of a board innovation or suspect that, but I do, any other thoughts that perhaps the superintendent and other members of the school, school district administration can take with them going into the new school year with regard to this plan and trying to ease any of the immediate impact it might have on students who become accustomed to and dependent on the media aides and the service they provide to our school district and to our students.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I think that the savings in health, health insurance is great. I wish it could have come earlier so we had known about it other than finding out about it tonight, but it, it's a great savings. It's, you know, it's going to help, help the residents of Milford, but I feel like I'm repeating myself when I say, basically say the same thing I said last year. I feel that we can do better and lower the mill rate more by making more reductions that wouldn't affect city services. But, I mean, it is what it is. I just wanted to, just wanted to put that out there and for that, I, I feel, because we can, we can save more, that I just, I can't, I can't vote for this budget. Thank you.
Alderman Winsmith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and through you, since this is the, the full budget vote, I just wanted to say a couple of things and point out a couple of concerns that I do have since that won't be available to me later. So there are, obviously there are a number of different departments that I, of course, am an avid supporter of and I think should have unanimous support on this board. I mean, I'm an avid supporter of the fire department and the police department and bridges and the Milford Arts Council and Bethel, as well as a number of other departments as well. But when, when we started back in the capital improvement plan meeting several months ago, and then we got to the bonding meeting a few months ago as well, I had brought up my concern with the lack of a long-range plan, that we don't have a new long-range plan, which is basically to have, to not have a long-range plan is to not have a sustainable educational system in the city. We need a new one that hasn't been addressed. The, the Board of Education came to the Board of Aldermen and they had indicated that they cannot commit to a new long-range plan and I just don't think it would be responsible to not have that. And that's one item. And there had been some discussion with respect to savings on cutting the positions of the library media aides. I don't know the, the feelings of other aldermen, but if we're saving 300, $400,000 in cutting those positions, but we're keeping $400,000 worth of flex furniture, I'm not going to be in the business of valuing furniture over people. And then lastly, I would just say that there are, there have been many departments taking certain cuts. The police department was asked to make cuts. They came back with cuts of $300,000. They were cut an additional $30,000 for a total of $330,000. And I think that if there are some departments or offices that have a certain percentage increase to salary or the like, I don't think it would be responsible for those departments to have a percentage increase to salary or, or for any other area when we're having other departments being asked to actively make cuts to their budget. So with all those items, I, I can't vote for this, I can't support this as presented. I do think there have been other aldermen who have suggested areas in which we can make cuts and we can easily do that. And if, and it's been suggested that we shouldn't do that, we shouldn't make more cuts and I just, I just find that very irresponsible as well. So I won't be supporting this. Thank you.
Once again, there's a motion on the floor in a second. The budget, all in favor? Roll call vote, Madam Secretary.
Alderman Gady?
Yes.
Alderman Gaynor?
No.
Alderman Janatasio?
No.
Alderman Golden?
Yes.
Alderman Grant?
No.
Alderman Hardiman? Alderman Harla?
Yes.
Alderman Parente? Alderman Frank Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Winthrop Smith?
No.
Alderman Sutton?
Yes.
Alderman Tranquilly?
No.
Alderman Vitro?
Yes.
Alderman Vitale?
No.
Alderman Willis? Nine in favor, six against.
Mr. Chairman, it's Ben Blake. At this point, if we could take a brief virtual recess so that our finance director can provide us the final total once the taxes are calculated pursuant to account 413111.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're in a brief recess, virtual recess. Thank you again. Peter, did you ask me something? I'm sorry.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. When you're ready to reconvene the board, I am prepared to share my screen with you, which will have the updated ordinance with all the totals.
I think we're out of recess. You can, you can present anything you want, Peter.
Mr. Chairman, through you, I do think that you have to designate someone that's traditionally been the Majority Leader to read that ordinance motion that is presented by our Finance Director virtually.
Oh, I thought Peter had something to add. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
I just.
But he could put it up on the, he can share it on the screen, can't he not?
Yes, before I share it on the screen, I'm not sure, I'm just wondering if you need to hear the current year taxes first, or do I just present the ordinance?
Mr. Chairman, through you to Peter, will you hear the current year taxes?
Okay. So the current year taxes will be $179,424,748, and the mill rate will be 27.68. ready.
Mr. Chair, can we make a suggestion that that ordinance be emailed to us somehow, some way, after we vote on it, or after the Majority Leader reads it?
I agree.
Yes.
Make that happen.
Thank you. Everybody will get a copy of an email via email. Alderman Sutton, you may read the ordinance.
Yes, I'm going to share my screen and, and just let me know if you have trouble reading it.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you, Mr. Adici.
He's going to share his screen, Alderman Sutton, and you're going to read that, read the ordinance?
Yes, that is correct. Once Mr. Adici puts the ordinance up, I will make the motion.
Thank you. Nothing yet, Peter, just to let you know.
Yeah, I just, I'm just trying to adjust here. controls to have the share screen button. I can see all of you on the speaker grid view, but I'm not sure if Justin can help me figure out how to get the, to exit this view where I don't have the share screen button.
Mr. Chairman, through you to Peter, you may want to hit escape, and that may stop you from sharing your screen or hit unshare.
I just, I just found, I just found it. Thank you. Let me try it again. It almost worked. Okay, I selected in, I hit share, but I'm wondering if you can see it. Hold on.
We can see, you may want to scroll so that we can see the top of it and then scroll down.
Okay, sure. What I'm going to do is, I'm going to, I have multiple screens, so I'm going to try
I think you need to scroll up or down, Peter.
Mr. Chairman, through you to Peter Adici, Peter, if you could scroll down to the portion of the ordinance discussing elderly exemptions and going forward to the, to the remainder of the ordinance.
Okay, what I've done now is, I can see the ordinance and I'm at the top of it. Can you see it at all?
Yes, I can.
Okay. So can you see the top, and would you like me to scroll down further, or would you like to start at the top?
Before, before you, you move the screen at all, I just want to confirm that in the third, whereas the numbers are correct, the revenues for 2021 in the amount of $217,678,035 is correct, and authorized appropriations in the same amount. That is correct, indeed?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, Alderman Sutton, that is correct.
Okay, and if you could, hold on one second. And I just need to see the screen at the very bottom where the three items appear in bold, please. All right, thank you very much, Mr. Adici.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve an ordinance establishing a budget for the City of Milford for fiscal year 2020-2021, setting the mill rate and establishing a due date in accordance with the provisions of Connecticut General Statutes and the Charter of the City of Milford. Whereas, the Board of Finance of the City of Milford has made estimates of the income and amount of money necessary to appropriate for the expenses of the City of Milford for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2020, and ending June 30, 2021, and has classified such expenses under appropriate headings, departments, and appropriations as more fully appears in the proposed fiscal budget submitted to the Board of Aldermen in accordance with Article 6, Section 2 of the Charter of the City of Milford. And whereas, the Board of Aldermen, having met and conducted a public hearing, has considered and said proposed fiscal budget and has made changes therein pursuant to Article 6, Section 3 of the Charter of the City of Milford. And whereas, the Board of Aldermen, in its deliberations in voting on said budget, has estimated revenues for the 2020-2021 fiscal year in the amount of $217,678,035 in authorized appropriations for 2020-2021 fiscal year in the amount of $217,678,035. Now, therefore, be it, and is hereby ordained and enacted by the Board of Aldermen of the City of Milford as follows, that the proposed fiscal budget for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2020, and ending June 30, 2021, at the rate of 27.68 mils upon the ratable estate within the limits of the City of Milford, are hereby laid and levied to meet the expenses of said budget. Said mill rate is set on the predication that it is estimated that $416,198 of said levy will be granted for elderly exemptions, State of Connecticut. $690,036 will be granted for a local tax relief program for the elderly. $375,223 will be granted for a local tax relief program for veterans, and 97.85% of the resulting levy will be collected during the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2020, provided that if the taxes of any person shall exceed $200, the first installment thereof, but not less than one-half of the amount of such taxes shall be due and payable on the first day of July 2020, and the remainder due and payable on the first day of January 2021. But any taxpayer may pay the total amount of the tax for which he or she is liable at the time when the first installment shall become payable. Such tax rates shall apply to all districts of the City of Milford. Taxes to be raised: $179,424,748. Total appropriation: $217,678,035. Total revenue: $217,678,035. This ordinance shall take effect in accordance with the Charter of the City of Milford.
Thank you, Alderman Sutton. The motion's been made. Second?
Second.
Roll call vote, Madam Secretary.
Mr. Chairman, there is, is there still an opportunity for discussion?
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, Ben Blake, I just want to thank the Aldermen for the time and energies that they took on this endeavor. Every year, we look to find or strike the right balance between making sure that our residents do continue to receive exceptional services, at the same time taking into consideration those taxes that our residents are paying. This year in particular was a very difficult year. This year in particular, especially at this moment in time that we're going through this pandemic, everyone is strapped, everyone is under pressures that they've never experienced before, and I think this budget does strike that perfect balance between being responsible, making sure that we deliver the same great services, especially in these times when government is more needed than ever before, but being considerate, being understanding of the financial pressures of those people paying our taxes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there any more discussion? Alderman Genetasio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. First and foremost, Mr. Chairman, thank you. You've done a superb job throughout this whole process, this virtual Zoom. I just want you to know that you've, you know, allowed us more than enough time. You've been very gracious in letting us express ourselves, and I just want to thank you for that. And also, Mayor Blake, you know, I've been the Minority Leader as long as you've been the mayor, so we've gotten to know each other through the years, and I do respect the job that you're doing, and I know that you always have the best interests of all the citizens of Milford, and I just wanted to acknowledge that because this is a time of coming together. Team Milford, historically, we would all venture out and celebrate, but I just would like to thank all the members of the board, all the new members that I had an opportunity to work with and get to know, and I look forward to further meetings, further debates, further deliberations. You know, this is a great city, we live in the best place on earth, and, you know, I wouldn't want to be anywhere else, and I'm just happy that we, you know, ended up in a good place. You know, my job as the Minority Leader, you know, I'm always looking to, you know, get into the weeds and see if we can do better. So I hope you respect my position, I do respect all of yours, and, and that's it. And, you know, this is those taxes that our residents are paying. This year in particular was a very difficult year. This year in particular, especially at this moment in time, the, that we're going through this pandemic. Everyone is strapped, everyone is under pressures that they've never experienced before, and I think this budget does strike that perfect balance between being responsible, making sure that we deliver the same great services, especially in these times when government is more needed than ever before, but being considerate, being understanding of the financial pressures of those people paying our taxes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there any more discussion? Alderman Ginatasio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. First and foremost, Mr. Chairman, thank you. You've done a superb job throughout this whole process, this virtual Zoom. I just want you to know that. You've, you know, allowed us more than enough time. You've been very gracious in letting us express ourselves, and I just want to thank you for that. And also, Mayor Blake, you know, I've been the minority leader as long as you've been the mayor, so we've gotten to know each other through the years. And I do respect the job that you're doing, and I know that you always have the best interests of all the citizens of Milford, and I just wanted to acknowledge that because this is a time of coming together, Team Milford. Historically, we would all venture out and celebrate. But I just would like to thank all the members of the board, all the new members that I had an opportunity to work with and get to know, and I look forward to further meetings, further debates, further deliberations. You know, this is a great city. We live in the best place on earth, and you know, I wouldn't want to be anywhere else. And I'm just happy that we, you know, ended up in a good place. You know, my job as the minority leader, you know, I'm always looking to, you know, get into the weeds and see if we can do better. So I hope you respect my position. I do respect all of yours, and and that's it. And you know, this is another budget behind us, so we all should be proud. Thank you, and look forward to seeing you all in person very soon. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your work.
I want to thank you too, Alderman Ginatasio, for the kind words towards me. I appreciate all the work you have done as a minority leader. You've led your team very, very well, and I appreciate all your remarks during all our meetings, and this kind of a meeting is, has its challenges to be, to be sure, and I think everyone knows that, and I think everyone on the board. They, they all earned compliments from me, as well as the mayor and Mr. Iradichi, everybody involved in all the department heads. I think everybody participated and made this process made it, made it complete and over, and I appreciate it again. Thank you. Alderman Harla.
Through you, Chairman, to Alderman Ginatasio. I just want to thank you, Tony, for, for bringing that up in regards to the service that the mayor and this board has brought to the city. I have the distinct advantage of living near, near the mayor, and I see physically the kind of time and the kind of energy and effort he's putting in, especially his last couple of months, and especially seeing his three little ones out playing in, in the yard and waiting for dad to come home. So I really, really appreciate all the work we've done. Again, on behalf of our, of the, of the Alderman Board, I want to thank, thank the mayor for his efforts as well, and a job well done. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Harla. Alderman Frank Smith.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for your leadership through this very unique process, and thanks to Tony Ginatasio for his gracious remarks. He's a a good proponent for the, for the minority view. He's forceful and well, well spoken in his position, but I appreciate his graciousness and his magnanimity in this, and I think it's a good example to all echelons of government and how we can work together as a team, even though we have our differences, and we should, but I appreciate every, the work of everyone on this board. I appreciate the work of Peter Eradichi. Again, he's done a magnificent job, and thank you all for getting through this process. We may get good at it someday, but the sooner we can get back to City Hall, the happier I'll be.
Well said, Alderman Smith. Alderman Tranquilly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to Mayor Blake. If I can, am I, I don't know if I'm allowed to speak about it or not, but I just want to ask a question as far as the next budget, July 1. Is that appropriate to ask a question like that for July?
Always stones.
Chairman, through you to Alderman Tranquilly. You can ask a question about any fiscal budget. I'm happy to entertain.
Okay, so I guess my question is, when July 1 comes along, and this is hypothetically speaking, if you come before the board and ask to transfer funds, as I think we do usually every year or most years, because I've only been on the board two years, because we come up a little short from the fiscal year before. Do you think that will affect city services for next year if we have to transfer some funds? If we come up short?
Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Tranquilly. We have, at least during my tenure, have never come up short. We've always had pretty significant surpluses each and every year, above and beyond nine, almost 10 million dollars in some years. So this board has never adopted a budget for which we have had a deficit. We work very closely with each of our department heads to make sure that we stay within budget. There are some budget adjustments that we make throughout the course of the year because, again, we can't account for every single thing in each line item, and there has to be some transfers pursuant to our financial rules, but overall, the city has always had healthy surpluses. We're going to continue that trend. Again, this is a tight budget. We're going to have to script and save in some areas and may have to make some adjustments, but we're going to continue to practice that financial discipline.
Thank you, Mayor Blake. I appreciate it.
Does anybody else have any more, anything else to say, any comments or discussion? See, now we'll call for a roll call vote. Madam Secretary.
Alderman Beatty?
Yes.
Alderman Gaynor?
No.
Alderman Ginatasio?
No.
Alderman Golden?
Yes.
Alderman Grant?
No.
Alderman Hardiman?
Yes.
Alderman Harla?
Yes.
Alderman Parente?
Yes.
Alderman Frank Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Winterp Smith?
No.
Alderman Sutton?
Yes.
Alderman Tranquilly?
No.
Alderman Vitron?
Yes.
Alderman Vitale?
No.
Alderman Willis?
Yes.
Nine in favor, six against.
Nine in favor, six, the motion passes. Thank you, Madam Secretary, and thank you again, everyone on the board for the, for your hard work in getting this process completed. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Both. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone, again. Have a good night.
Thank you. Good night.